Please.
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Schoenhyder.
Here.
Alderman Novitt.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore is absent. Alderman Penderleone is absent. Alderman Tac is absent. Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Adelman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recolored or which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First item on the agenda this evening is reports of city officers, and the first under that item is appointments or comments by mayor. And tonight's one of those nights where we have a lot of really fun things to talk about. Normally, they aren't quite as exciting as this, but we've got a lot of exciting things. The first thing, which maybe isn't quite as exciting, is an appointment to the Croya Board. John Maher will be appointed to the Croya Board, and I would ask for our motion to approve his appointment, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. It is approved. Next item is one of the fun ones this evening. The girls' cross-country team from Deer Path Middle School, who is here with us this evening, I am happy to tell you, has won the state championship. And we are very proud of them, and they should be very proud of the effort they've put forth. And I'd ask their coach, Martha Sostrow, to come up and say a couple of words, and then the girls can come up.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, and the members of the Lake Forest City Council for inviting us to your meeting tonight. Coach Ivan, my husband, who is standing behind me, and the Lake Forest Deer Path State Champion Girls Cross Country Team are excited and very honored to be here. This amazing team of young ladies have hearts of champions and are the best, sorry, are the best girls' cross-country team in the state of Illinois. Through every single race, they persevered, ran with guts, toughness, and Lake Forest Deer Path pride. We could not be more proud of them for achieving their goal of being state champions. The first ever for any sport at Lake Forest Deer Path in the school's 64-year history. So phenomenal. You ladies proved the statement, where there is unity, there is always victory. To be so true and painted a vivid picture of the song "Lean on Me," as you truly leaned on each other all season long to achieve the title of state champions. We are so blessed, honored, and privileged to be your coaches. It is with the incredible support and encouragement from your family, school, staff, and the entire city of Lake Forest that make accomplishments like this happen. We want the city of Lake Forest to know the awesome impact this tremendous group of girls and their wonderful parents have had on our lives and the Lake Forest and the entire Lake Forest community, excuse me. We will treasure this experience forever and hope you will do the same. We love you all. Again, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, and the City Council of Lake Forest, members of the City Council of Lake Forest for inviting us here tonight. Thank you so much.[232.59][232.59][applause]
Something for you? Okay.
Would you have something for that's what people come on?
Okay.
Paris, come on close, because I know you'll all get a few minutes to take pictures. Why don't you line up right in front of the council, and we'll have them stand behind you. I'll tell you what, girls, push back a little bit.
Yeah, come back a little bit.
So that the Alderman behind you can get in a picture.
This way?
Uh-oh.
Everyone look over the footpath.
Paris, did we get all the pictures? Congratulations.[352.24][352.24][applause]
On behalf of the council and on behalf of the entire community, to the girls at Deer Path Middle School, congratulations. Great job. I told you this is fun. I've got some more interesting and exciting sports reporting tonight. I told Ann I'm like Czech Kopic up here. The Lake Forest Boys High School team won their first round of their state playoffs this weekend, crushing Hubbard 41 to 6. Their second-round game will be this weekend against De La Sal out of Chicago. Time and date to be determined. Another state champion in our town for the ninth time since 2000. The Lake Forest High School Scouts Girls Field Hockey Team are state champions. They won over the weekend. They finished 21 and 1, outscored their opponents 136 to 13. That doesn't even seem fair, does it?[444.81][444.81][laughter] They will be graduating 14 seniors who have played together for four years. So, we're very proud of them, and we want to give them our best and congratulate them as well. The girls' cross-country team has qualified as a team for the state meet at Detwire Park in Peoria on November 9th. And Mark Myers has qualified as an individual from the boys' team also for the state meet on November 9th. So to all of our scouts, athletes, all of your terrific hard work and effort, we're proud of you. Congratulations. Wonderful years, and we're continuing to pull for you as your season concludes.
Mr. Mayor, don't forget the tennis team, too.
Oh, wait a minute, I missed one. See, there's just too much. And, congratulations to the Lake Forest Girls High School Tennis Team, who are also state champions. We've just got so many champions, I can't keep track. So, congratulations. Next comment I wanted to make is, again, you know, this is one of those nights where my report gets to do a lot of very fun, but also very worthwhile, things. Last week, Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital honored some of the area's very special local firefighters and paramedics. And we were fortunate, as a community, to have two of those groups honored for extraordinary efforts that they engaged in in keeping our community and our residents safe. The first group was firefighter Corey Casemore, firefighter Patrick Issel, firefighter Dave Tishney, Lieutenant Stephen Gross, and Deputy Chief Chris Garrison. They were involved in a collaborative effort amongst Lake Forest firefighters and paramedics that saved the life of a 51-year-old man suffering in a severe asthma attack. I won't go into the details, but what they did was extraordinary. Recognition of the severity of their patient's status, along with quick and accurate intervention, exemplifies the Lake Forest Fire Department's high quality of care. And we had another group that was honored that day as well. Deputy Chief Kevin Issel and Battalion Chief Pete Seibert. They were successfully organized an emergency response system for the 2013 BMW championship, showing leadership, calm, and focus during an eight-day event marked by severe heat and humidity. The task involved securing the health and safety of the players, volunteers, and 130,000 spectators, and coordinating a staffing plan for 75 firefighter paramedics from multiple municipalities, 51 doctors and nurses, and members of the Lake County EMS network. They exemplified the character and excellence of the city of Lake Forest and its partners. And I personally and all of the council tonight would like to thank and congratulate each of you for those special recognition. I do have one other comment tonight that isn't quite as fun. Representative Scott Drury informed us yesterday that the village of Highwood is giving consideration to, the city of Highwood is giving consideration to modifying their stance on video gaming in their community. All of the communities in the North Shore, the surrounding communities to Lake Forest, have all made a point of making a statement that they will not allow video gaming in their communities. And Highwood is now considering reversing that position. We understand that Highwood, like many other communities in northern Illinois and across the country, are struggling with how to, as we've talked tonight, how to match up revenue with expenses. However, I believe that the efforts to change their position on video gaming will negatively impact their community and would negatively impact the surrounding communities. And so, I'm encouraging and hoping they will reconsider that. It is on their agenda for council consideration tomorrow evening. I hope they change their position. I think it does, again, negatively impact Highwood, and I think it negatively impacts the communities that surround it. So I appreciate State Representative Drury bringing this to attention, our attention, and hope that they're able to reconsider that. And certainly, if any residents out there believe the same, I would encourage them to reach out and contact them. And that is the extent of my report tonight. Next comment, next item on the agenda, comments by city manager, Bob Kyler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I have no report this evening.
He must think there's a Bears game tonight. It's the only thing I can think of.
Really?
Next item on the agenda, comments by city council members, the Finance Committee. Audit Committee Report for Fiscal Year 2013, presented by Michelle Moreno, the Audit Committee Chairperson, with the staff contact of Elizabeth Olive. Michelle, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I am happy to report that the Audit Committee has completed its work for this year. Committee has seven members, myself, Lucinda Byer, Amy Krebs, Andy Logan, Andy Marwied, Mayor Don Schoenhyder, ex-officio, and Finance Committee Chair George Penderleone, also ex-officio. In 2013, the committee conducted four meetings, one in January, April, August, and October. We continue in our charge by the city council to review the financial statements of the foundations associated with the city. The committee has reviewed, in 2013, the financial statements of Elawa Foundation, Parks and Recreation Foundation, Ragdale Foundation, and the Gorton Community Center. The Audit Committee conducted interviews of finalist firms responding to the request for proposals for audit services issued by the city. As a result of those interviews, the committee recommended, and city council confirmed, reappointment of McGladrey LLP as the city's independent auditors. In August, the committee received a presentation by the city finance staff and the auditors on new pension requirements that will impact the city's financial statements in the next two years. The committee and city staff are focused on being proactive in addressing the new standards and ensuring that we clearly communicate the implications, excuse me, of the new standards when they go into effect. For fiscal year 2013, the Audit Opinion is again clean in the new parlance, unmodified, and meets all accounting requirements. Government-wide financial statements in the CAFR are on pages 16 and 17. The government-wide financials are accrual basis of accounting. Net assets of the city decreased by 1.9 million, from 272.6 million to 270.7 million. The capital assets of government activities, roads and bridges, were 225 million of that 270, and the business-type activities, being the water lines, sewers, et cetera, accounted for 46 million. In the fund, financial statements of the governmental funds, which is on pages 18 to 21 of the CAFR, modified accrual basis of accounting is used. This includes major, as well as non-major funds, major funds being the General Fund and Parks and Rec. Budgetary schedules are included on page 61. For the General Fund, the fund balance increased by 1 million. This was due to revenues exceeding expenditures. Revenues were more than budgeted, and expenses came in under budget. I would comment that, from the Audit Committee's perspective, the city's been extremely well-managed. We've been very happy with the reports and analyses and the way our questions have been answered. So, we feel very good about that. Other items that I would bring to your attention as you review the CAFR, the Management Discussion and Analysis, which is on page 3, the Transmittal Letter, which is also in the introductory section. It gives a very concise overview of the trends and movements in not only the economy, but also in our government finances. And the statistical section, which is in a separate tab, you'll find beginning on page The financial statements are available for review on the city's website, www.cityoflakeforest.com. And the Management Letter has no comments. It's a clean letter for fiscal 2013. There is one recommendation to the city, and this relates to the Deer Path Golf Course for improving internal controls. Those changes are already underway. Those are my prepared comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Any questions for Michelle? Michelle, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it is worth mentioning, and maybe I do this every year when Michelle or whoever from Chairman of the Audit Committee is. The city of Lake Forest is one of the few communities, not just in Illinois, but in the country, that has an independent resident group that serves as an audit committee. And this is an independent group. They meet with the auditors. Staff isn't even present at times when they're meeting with the auditors. So I think the community should feel very good about having such an oversight committee of Lake Forest residents in place that look over not just the staff shoulders and the city council's shoulders, but also then the auditors, the independent auditors that we bring in. And I think this helps contribute to the city's very strong financial condition that they're in. So, I want to thank Michelle and the entire Audit Committee for all their work. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the hard work of Elizabeth Olive and her staff, too, because putting an audit together is not easy.
Any public comment on this? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the receipt of the audit report.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Five yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, from the Public Works Committee, requests for an early purchase of equipment included in the FY 2015 capital equipment budget. We did have a presentation by Michael Thomas at the Finance Committee on this item. Any council members have any additional questions or comments for Michael? If not, could I ask for any public comment or questions? If not, I'd like to make, I'd ask for a motion to waive the bidding process and authorize the purchase of two police package Tahos from a state bid vendor in the amount of $61,232.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we require your vote.
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. And also, need a motion to waive the bidding process and authorize the purchase of a replacement pothole patching machine from Spalding Manufacturing in the amount of $28,500. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, your votes required.
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, the Property and Public Lands Committee, consideration of recommendations from the Property and Public Lands Committee of the city council regarding redevelopment of the former municipal services property on Laurel Avenue and the prospect of approving a motion in support of the recommendation tonight, presented by Alderman Reisenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The PPL, or Property and Public Lands Committee, consists of myself as chairman, Alderman Adelman, and Alderman Penderleone. Over the past several months, with support from the city's consultant and staff, PPL has considered how and when to move forward with the process for selecting a developer for the city's former municipal services site. And we come before you this evening with three recommendations. The first recommendation is to accept the revised municipal services development parameters that were developed by the Plan Commission. These revised parameters provide flexibility to encourage designer interest and creativity, allowing wider range of proposals while still keeping the focus on compatibility with the community and a high-quality development. The PPL recommends that council accept these revised parameters from the Plan Commission. The second recommendation is to authorize a request for qualifications. The RFQ was initially developed by staff and Lee Brown, the city's consultant from TESCA. The RFQ was reviewed and edited by the PPL over the course of several meetings. And the PPL is now requesting approval to issue the RFQ for public review and response. The PPL will then review selective respondents with a goal of identifying three to five qualified developers. The third and last recommendation is to authorize the process to establish a tax increment financing district. It was suggested by consultant to start the TIF process coincident with the issue of the RFQ and the RFP. And we're seeking approval to direct staff, the city's consultant, and the Plan Commission to begin the formal public TIF process. These recommendations, we believe, are important next steps in the development of the former Laurel Avenue Municipal Services property. Michael, I'm pretty much finished with my comments. George is not with us tonight. Is there anything that you have to add, you'd like to add?
You covered it real well. Item number three really is for the Plan Commission to hold hearings on moving forward with the TIF. PPL has considered a lot of factors leading up to this point in time, and we recommend it. I think Jack hit on it. I don't know if there's anything Kathy wants to add. And if you have any questions, we've got Kathy here, Lee Brown's here.
Yeah, the question I have, and again, I didn't have the benefit of the PPL meetings, but items one and two, I understand encouragement for development of the Laurel Avenue site. Item three, I have some question on just as far as the timing of the TIF. Is this something that we really need to undertake at this point? Is there an advantage, or is there more an advantage to maybe phasing this in at a more opportune time, or when there's some activity?
Lee?
Yep.
I'm Lee Brown. I'm president of TESCA Associates, and we act as consultants. The TIF, establishment of a TIF district takes quite a bit of time. It also requires a considerable number of public meetings, notices to individual property owners and to other agencies, and most importantly, ultimately, it would be brought before city council for action. That process, because of the state requirements for timing, allows us to establish eligibility, to identify what the plan would be, but not to execute it until it's ready. If you choose to move forward, you would do that with reasonable confidence that a developer would be selected. You wouldn't do that until you believe the timing is right. So, the action that you would be taking now is simply to allow the process to begin without a commitment to actually establishing the district.
Okay, so we're lining up at the starting line, but the race hasn't started.
That's correct.
Okay. That was my concern, and that's answered.
Can you either comment some questions of Jack, or Mike, or Lee? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the three items that Alderman Reisenberg outlined.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Five yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to address the council this evening?
I have a comment as Alderman. All of us watching the news may have seen that the son of a Lake Forest family was one of the victims in the Los Angeles Airport shooting. Brian Ludmer was on his way home to visit his family when he got shot in the leg. He had the presence of mind to put a tourniquet on his leg to stop the bleeding, and he has survived. He is hospitalized, and I know I speak for the entire city council, and we wish him a full and speedy recovery.
Thank you, Alderman Palmer. Next item on the agenda, items for omnibus vote consideration. This evening, there are eight. If anyone would like to consider any of the items separately, you can do so at the end, otherwise I'll ask for a motion to approve all of them together. Item number one, approval of the Act 21, 2013 City Council Minutes. Item number two, check register for September 28 through October 25, 2013. Item number three, determination of an estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2013 calendar year in accordance with the Truth in Taxation statute and establishment of a public hearing date for the 2013 tax levy, if required. Item number four, approval of expenditure removing the Emerald Ash Core Funds from the annual tree and stump removals for FY 14. Item number five, consideration of waiving the bidding process and authorizing the purchase of replacement video recording systems for police squad cars. I guess there's two of them. Oh, number two, an approval of server purchase. Item number six, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board, first reading if desired by the city council, final approval. Item number seven, consideration, item number seven, I'm sorry about that, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, first reading if desired by the city council, final approval. And item number eight, approval of the vacation of a sewer easement on the Old Elm Golf Course. Any of those items wish to be taken separately? I think we're having a lot of AV problems here tonight, Bob.
Ben, I'd like to move for approval of the eight omnibus items.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Biddy, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor will require your vote.
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Biddy. Next item on the agenda this evening is ordinances. This is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board, first reading if desired by the city council, final approval, presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item, this recommendation from the Building Review Board, it comes to you with unanimous recommendation, but there were some continuing concerns on the part of the neighbor to the south. So we did put it on your regular agenda just to allow you to have a little bit fuller understanding of the petition. I did receive a call from the neighbor to the south earlier today. He is out of town, but I thought I would still do a very brief presentation, just to let you know that the Building Review Board did carefully consider the questions. This is a request for a demolition of an existing structure, an approval of a replacement structure, garage, and replacement landscaping. structure, garage, and replacement landscaping. The existing house is shown in the photo. This house is located on Edgewood Road, an area where we've actually seen a number of demolitions occur over in recent times. I don't know if you can see the yellow dots, but the yellow dots indicate homes in this neighborhood that have been demolished and replaced. The subject site is in this area right here. The Building Review Board understands that construction in these older neighborhoods with very small lots is challenging. In fact, they considered this petition over a series of three meetings, and then directed that before it came to you, that we move further than we normally would and actually have engineering staff complete final review and approval of the drainage and grading plan. So all that work has been done. Just very quickly, again, showing you the existing structure in a streetscape view, the home to the north, the home to the south, existing footprint of the house, and the existing garage. The proposed replacement structure does get longer. This is a very narrow lot. The house, as proposed and as recommended by the Building Review Board, is only 80% of the allowable square footage for the property. The board, to summarize their considerations, they worked on this design to try and achieve a consistent architectural style, to assure that the window placement, the various architectural elements on the house were consistent with the Dutch colonial style. They looked carefully at the massing of the side elevations to ensure that, to the extent possible, the house was articulated, the side elevations were articulated in a way that really reduced the impact on the neighboring homes. From the initial submittal, the length of this house was reduced. Again, it's a long, narrow lot. To achieve the allowable square footage, that means the house has to be long and narrow. Although the Building Review Board doesn't have purview over drainage, they understood that that was important, and from a design perspective, they felt that reducing the length of the house and moving toward pervious pavers for the hardscape surfaces would help address that issue from a design perspective. In summary, this project fully complies with the building scale ordinance. In fact, it achieves only 80% of the allowable square footage for this lot. The project fully complies with the zoning setback requirements and the lot coverage requirements, and the grading and drainage plan, as I mentioned, is finalized, and additional information was required by engineering staff in direct response to concerns raised by the neighboring property owner. The approved drainage plan does require a curb along the south side of the driveway, the full length of the house, in recognition of the proximity of the house to the south and the window wells in that area. The board continued, considered an alternative design that flipped the house with the driveway on the north side, found that to be less desirable and more impactful on some of the neighbors to the north, and something that the petitioner wasn't supportive of. As I mentioned, there are pervious pavers that are being used for the hardscape surface, and there will be a drainage swale required on the north side of the property. Again, this comes to you with a unanimous recommendation for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
And following up on phone conversation earlier today, and just, again, to be very straightforward, I did visit the site, and I've had a history with the project, from calls from the neighbor to the south of this property. And the neighbor to the south's primary concern was the drainage. The one thing that isn't clearly depicted on the pictures is there is a slope that would go from the home that's being developed on to and down to the neighbor to the south that makes drainage a very large issue in regard to this home, and I would understand the sensitivity of the neighbor to the south. You did delve into the question of the sighting of the driveway, and again, I understand the desirability or the, you know, the look of the home, but again, having a much more pervious surface maybe adjacent to the house on the south might be more of a driving need than merely the aesthetics. I don't know, maybe that makes sense to me, but I do trust the board. But I do ask that city engineer and staff, as we're approving a drainage plan, to please explore all possibilities, maybe extending the storm sewer out to catch water as it's going south would be a positive. But again, I just want to be very sensitive, because I could clearly see the problem that is going to come up as far as drainage goes.
And I can acknowledge that, again, engineering staff did look very carefully at this drainage plan. As the board discussed, the sighting of the house, actually moving the house and the greater impervious surface closer to the south, did not seem to be desirable. As this project moves forward, inspectors from both community development and engineering staff will monitor the project closely.
Thank you.
Question? Just following up on your line of thought, we're going to require a curb put in along the south side of the driveway, right?
Correct.
So would we, is it unheard of to put in a storm inlet or two in that curb to pick up the runoff?
The engineering supervisor is in the audience, Bob Els, and I think he can better respond to your questions.
With the residents obviously contributing to the expense, not the city.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The plan, as Kathy said, that was submitted by the applicant, has been fully approved by engineering. There was no storm sewer on the plan. They did not put that on their plan. One is not required by the watershed development ordinance that we use to approve plans. The, it meets all the requirements for runoff volume pervious on the site, so there is no, nothing in the ordinance saying that they have to put a storm sewer in. It meets the rules. There is not going to be additional runoff onto the neighbor's property. Engineering staff has been out there several times. They looked at the drainage on the site as it exists now. Engineering staff has met with the resident to the south on two occasions out there and went over the lay of the land, if you will, and how the topography is now, what it would be based on the plan that was ultimately approved. They also went over with that applicant a couple of... This is the house here that's going to be torn down and replaced. The natural drainage right now basically follows that red arrow. A couple of things that city staff pointed out to the resident here to the south, there is an inlet, existing private yard inlet, that little red square there, on his property. The staff found that to be in disrepair. They cannot find a viable outlet on that, so they gave the owner some recommendations on what he could do to prob, that's the area where that resident has said that water, currently, he has a problem with some water collecting there, but that inlet is not working. The other issue was this area here, this red box, is where the resident to the south has built up that area and put a raised planting bed, which effectively is stopping, because that water should keep going to the south through the neighborhood. So staff pointed that out to him and told him that maybe he could look at that, and that would take care of the water that seems to be coming impounded here on his lot. But to get back to your question, a storm sewer by ordinance is not required. The property meets all of the requirements of the watershed development ordinance.
So Bob, do you feel the concrete curb along the south side of the driveway will effectively do the same thing as a storm inlet? It'll direct the flow out towards the street?
No, sir. It's not going to direct it out towards the street. The curb is, this existing house here to the south has window wells here, and the curb is just to ensure that storm water is not going to go to the house into the window wells. It's going to, all of the drainage on this lot goes to the rear.
Oh, so...
It all goes, that's the natural, this whole area goes this way. So all that curb's going to do is make sure the water goes down the driveway to the east and gets into this natural runoff pattern here. It's just keeping it, right now, there is some that would go this way, most naturally goes that way. That's just to protect the window wells on the house to the south. That's all the curb is going to do.
That's the area I saw, and it was in spring, and it was frightening, yeah, at least in my estimation. The backyard was also, it was like a pond, and, yeah, I mean, I could see where the neighbor would be frightened. That's why I'm thinking of the idea of possibly, the possibility of a storm drain being put out there. Again, if they choose to bear the expense, is that a possibility for them if they want to bear the expense?
It may very well be a possibility. There is no storm sewer shown out there along Edgewood. I'm looking at the plan that the applicant submitted, and it doesn't even show that there is a storm sewer out there on Edgewood.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bob or Kathy? Any comments tonight by the public on this matter? If not, I will ask the council if we need a motion to, first of all, waive first reading?
I move to waive first reading.
Do you have a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Novit.
No.
Alderman Waldeck.
No.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Yea.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
For our waiving of first reading, we require two-thirds of the votes present. We do not have that, so this would not waive first reading. We can have a first reading and then have this returned to the council at a next meeting.
So do we need, do we simply need a motion to approve first reading?
We need a motion to approve first reading.
Okay. I'll look for it. Motion to approve first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
There can be a voice.
Voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. First reading has been approved, and it will come back again on a future agenda. Next item on the agenda, new business. Any new business to come before the council this evening? Seeing none, next item on the agenda, additional comments for council discussion? And seeing none, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.